Now, three times a charm. So with that, I will call to order this special meeting between the Ferndale School District School Board and the Lummi Nation Board, School Board. So first thing I'd like to do is just to go around and introduce ourselves. I'm not sure how the screen's lined up, but maybe the folks from the Lummi School Board could introduce themselves and then we can talk about that. So then I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, I'm Jenna Thinkbonner, Ferndale High School alumni many, many, many years ago. I am the Chair of the Lummi Nation School Board now, and I thank you guys for doing this. It's all been kind of crazy because of the weather, but if we haven't learned anything in this last few years as to roll with the punches in this, in these crazy times, so it's good to see you all, and I thank you guys for being here tonight. I'll hand it off to Kathleen.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen. I'm a member of the Lummi Nation Board. I'm happy to be here. Thank you for your guys' time. And Kevin, you're, you're not muted.
Okay, well, I guess I pass that to me. I'm Kevin Villas, Principal of Lummi Nation School, and happy to be here tonight.
I'm Bernie Thomas. I'm the Lummi Nation Education Director. And I'm also Heather Leighton's neighbor. So I got to be very, very careful. Very careful.
I'm Melinda Cool. I am a member of the Ferndale School Board, proud parent of a senior, and also a graduate of 2019, and very happy to be here. Thank you very much for bringing us all together. And I'll hand it off to Leanne.
I'm Leanne Riddle. I've been on the Ferndale School Board for 16 years. This is my last time, and I am so happy to be spending it with you guys. So, thank you. I wish we were in the same space. And I will pass it off to Kevin.
I'm Kevin Erickson, Ferndale School Board Director and Ferndale High School Alumni 84, since that seems to be a theme tonight. Happy to be here. Glad we're having this meeting, and I totally agree with Jana. We are learning to roll with the punches, no matter whether it's viruses, weather, or anything else that gets thrown at us. And I'll hand it over to Jessie.
This is Jessie Geerdorff. I'm on the Ferndale School Board, and I'm so happy to be here, whether it's Zoom or not. And thank you for this meeting, and thank you, Heather, for helping me.
All right, so, Peggy, are you connected?
I'm back. I lost my internet connection on my laptop, so I just grabbed my phone.
Okay, so we're just doing an introduction.
Sorry about that.
So you can introduce yourself.
Oh, oh, okay. I am Peggy Ufiano. I am the, I don't know what you want to call it, new School Board Member for District Five, for the Ferndale School District. I don't really have much more to say than that. That's, that's pretty much it. Thanks.
And I'm Andrew McLaren. I'm the current President of the School Board, but this is also my next-to-the-last official meeting tonight, in my 12-year tenure, and I'm very happy to be here, meeting again with Lummi Nation representatives. So thank you. And now we'll just do a quick introduction around of the Ferndale administrative staff who are here. Kelly.
Thanks, Andrew. My name is Kelly Larrabee, and I am one of the Executive Directors of Teaching and Learning here in Ferndale, and I tend to focus on our elementary-age students. So thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, and we appreciate this partnership. So thank you. Faye?
Good evening. I'm Faye Brett, and I'm the other Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and tend to focus on secondary, but I also work very closely with the Native American and the Alummi program. So very glad to be here, and thank you for all joining with us. And John?
Welcome. I'm John Fairbairn, Executive Director of Human Resources. And when I get bored with that, I do COVID stuff around here, just for, for fun, and since we're announcing our kids, proud dad of twins that graduated with, with Melinda and, and with Heather's. Mark?
Hi, I'm Mark DeBach. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Support Services. Normally, this year, I am the interim superintendent as well. And I would like to say thank you all very much for your flexibility and, and helping us out, getting this meeting coordinated. It was not easy on the, on the backend, and I very much appreciate your cooperation and support in making this happen. And I will turn it over to Heather.
Good evening. My name is Heather Leighton, and I'm the Principal at Vista Middle School. And I have been working closely with Faye and Mark on providing support for our Indian education programs, and so I am here to be a part of the meeting tonight. So welcome, everybody. It's good to see everybody, and it's nice to meet you in person, Peggy.
And you too.
And Steve has joined us. Steve, if you want to introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Steve Childs, and I'm a newly-elected Board Member. And I'm glad to be here tonight, and this is all your smiling faces, so that's, that's about it. Thanks.
Andrew? Andrew?
Yeah.
I just want to say Bernie is not conceited. Bernie sent out an email earlier with the, the Facebook, with the Zoom link in it. So all these Bernie Thomases are actually probably my Board Members or people from Lummi. So if, if, I don't know.
Looks like one is, looks like one is TJ.
Yeah, that's the only reason I realized, like, why does Bernie keep popping up? But that, so TJ I see is on here, and I don't know who the other two Bernie Thomases are, but if you guys could introduce yourselves real quick, too, please.
Andy Jefferson is one of them. From J O M.
Is it okay to go, Jana? I'll go if no one else is on. My name's Terrence Adams, also known as TJ. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Lummi Business Council. Glad to be here today. I appreciate the invite, and I'm very excited to hear what we have going on within our schools and our community, and it's good to see my Auntie Jessie. I haven't seen her in a while, so I get to see her over Zoom. Hope you're doing well, Auntie, and once again, I thank you all for your time, your efforts, and I hope everybody's having a good and safe time through these floods and this crisis times that we're in, so thank you all.
Great. Anyone else? All right, so for us, the first thing that we do is to adopt the agenda, and I hope everyone has had a chance to look at that. And so I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, or make any changes that folks would like to have.
I will make a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as written.
All right. I've got a motion to adopt the agenda as written, and, and we can all collectively vote. Aye or nay? So all in favor of adopting the agenda as written, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Bernie, you didn't vote.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. All right, so the first item on our agenda is a presentation by Ferndale School District on how our Lummi students are faring in Ferndale School. And so, I don't know, Mark, did you have anything you wanted to say before we start that? The presentation?
We're going to turn it over to Faye and, and.
Well, thank you. I'm going to share my screen right here. Let me go. Okay, hopefully, thumbs up. Can you see that? Brilliant. Thank you. So thanks again for joining us. This is our annual meeting where we share with you data on our students and how they're faring in Ferndale Schools, and I'm going to use a phrase that Heather's taught me very well, which is a Stevenson. So please bear with us as we share this. One of the things that we learned this year was how hard it actually is to pull data from previous years, and really appreciate our staff and our schools helping to gather that. So with that, what we have learned is that we will run the data at the end of June before we roll up into the next year, so that it doesn't, doesn't cause as many difficulties in running current data as it does in running previous year's data. So with that, being said, our, one of some of the things we'd like to share with you tonight, our information on our student enrollment and how our students are doing, to share some information on how Native American programs and the work of our student engagement liaisons. One of the things that I'm sure is very important to you is the budget information and how we are allocated dollars, and that directly ties into our Impact Aid piece. And then we'd like to share how we recognize and honor our Native American students, and as you know, we are just today wrapping up Native American Heritage Month, and we've been doing lots of work in our schools to honor and recognize that. And then finally, just to touch base with you on communication. So, and I'd just like to say, as we start that, I really appreciated the work that Jana, Heather, Bernie, and I have been doing this year to work on the JPPs and the IPPs and planning, collaboratively planning this meeting, and excited for some of the things that we have upcoming in the new year to kind of look at the realignment, and I'll explain a little bit about that later. So, as you can see here, we have, this shows kind of our progression from 2017 through to the fall of this year on our student enrollment, and you'll notice one of the items there is our total Lummi student population, and also our total Native American, Alaska Native population. So of course, we have students from other tribes and areas, so we pretty much stay fairly consistent around hovering right around 14% of our student population are students who are Native American. This chart here is difficult, obviously, to read, so I put some bar graphs together for you, but one of the things that we've tracked over the last three years is our average daily attendance for our students from each of our schools, and comparing our Lummi students to our non-Lummi, sorry, Native American students to our non-Native American students. But it's much easier to see in bar graph form, and you can see there we've gone, looked at 2019 to 20, and then 2020 to 21, and then just a snapshot of how we're doing so far this year. You'll notice last year, when we were in remote learning for a significant portion of the year, and then returning students to hybrid model, beginning with our youngest learners in October, our attendance was significantly lower than previous years, and it's starting to trend back up to normal this year. I say normal, pre-pandemic, I should say, rather than normal, because what is normal? And our bar graph, so you can see in the all students compared to our Native American students, that our Native American students are a little bit lower, particularly last year, the pandemic really had a significant impact on attendance. It was challenging for everyone. And turning a little bit now to look at course completion, and one of the things that we noticed last year, and this kind of aligns really with our attendance, is our students really, really struggled with learning remotely and transitioning to only being in school part-time. And you'll notice that here we have Horizon, Vista, and Ferndale High School, and the total number of courses that weren't passed. And at the middle school, we use U. We don't use F. We use U, which means that they're not quite there yet. They're not at standard. And then at the high school level, we use an NC, which stands for no credit, and that just means that they haven't met standard on that course yet, so they haven't passed it. You'll see that that was a huge impact throughout our student body, but particularly for our Native American students. If we were statistically significant, we should see that 13.8% of our Native American students were struggling at the same rate as our non-Native American students. So you'll see from this that we fell, were higher, and faring a little bit worse in some situations. Our 11th graders were probably the closest to statistical significance, but our sixth graders, particularly at Horizon, really struggled. So that's something for us to pay attention to and, and particularly track as we go through the year. I was, when I was looking through this earlier, I thought it'd be great to pull up the year before, but then as I did that, I realized a little bit of a caveat. The same chart, and how many no credits, and how many unsatisfactories at the middle level, but one of the things to bear in mind is that this really only reflects first semester, whereas if I jump back, this reflects the whole year. And the reason for that is when we closed the physical buildings in March 2020, we made a decision as a secondary teaching and learning team that we did not want grading to be punitive for our students. So we awarded kids, they either received an A, or they received an I, which meant that they were just incomplete in their course, and that they could work to make up at a different time. So statistically, not as, I mean, much, much closer statistical significance to previous year to this year. But like I said, that caveat of second semester, I would say we only had a handful of incompletes, so it doesn't really compare in a great way, but I thought it was interesting to just see the impact that the pandemic truly had on our students. Again, last year, we didn't have great opportunities for athletic and activity participation, particularly at the middle level. We did a lot of intermurals and things to engage our students, but we didn't necessarily track who was participating in terms of the breakdown of demographics of our students. A little bit different at the high school level, when we jumped back into in person, we're able to participate back in with the WAAA and athletic competition. So again, if you look at the statistical significance, our Native American students aren't participating at the same percentage as our non-Native American students, and I'm going to pause that because I see Jana's hand up.
Well, just going back to the numbers real quick, and you said it's kind of comparing green apples to red apples. Is there a way to look at just those same quarter or the same semester, though, and compare it that way? Or would it still be?
That is a great idea, Jana, and that's something that until I really looked at it today and was like, oh, that's, that's why our data may look really different in second semester last year compared to this year, but I can definitely do that and share that back with you. Okay, pausing, and one, we have Oxala at Ferndale High School, which is our Native American Leadership Group, and then a club and group, and then at the high school, we have, the middle level, we have Chesquen. And you'll see that the numbers of participants kind of fluctuate roughly around between 20 and 30 at the, at the high school. And Logan Toby, who's our Native American Engagement Liaison at the middle level, is just about to start his Chesquen Clubs backup for this year, so we'll have those updated numbers for you for next year. Sharing a little bit on our students who were served in special education. One of the pieces here is that we are throughout our entire system moving to an multi-tiered system of supports and using universal design for learning throughout our system. And that's one of our big initiatives, using our ESSA funding to support putting a lot of systems in place to support our students who need some more intentional targeted support, some additional short-term support, but it's very fluid so that students can move within and outside of supports as they need that. But as you'll see, our average special education population is 13.8%, with the state average being 13.5. And one of the pieces there to truly understand is that the MTSS model and the UDL, some multi-tiered systems of support and universal design for learning, are not just aimed for our special education students. They're aimed at all of our students to provide equitable access to their learning as each individual student needs it. So it's a support when they need it, and they can come in and out of those supports as needed. And you'll see that our, we are very statistically not significant and not relevant in terms of our qualification for special education. So we actually, with the state, are working to really address and put systems in place, and the MTSS and UDL is one of those systems to look and dig deeper into the disproportionality of overqualifying our Native American students in special education. So that's something that we're working on with the state, as well as within our own systems under that umbrella. So that's a big, a big target for us is to address that unclear disproportionality. As you'll see, two of our schools are particularly high. Eagle Ridge and Skyline hovering between 50 and 60% of their Native American students are served in special education. So switching on to our Lummi programs, this is really quite exciting to see the growth of our programs from 1920 into 20 and 21. Part of that at the middle level is our Lummi language classes that run through both Vista and Horizon. And then at the high school, we have different levels, like Oxala, as well as Lummi Language, Oxford. And at the middle level, too, and Heather, feel free to jump in at any time. At the middle level, we also focus not just on language, but on tying culture into those language classes. So whether they're called a Lummi language class, or whether they're called a cultural class, they kind of incorporate culture and language for our kiddos. So you can see that we're, we're really growing across all levels of our students that are involved in our programs from last year to, well, the two years ago to last year, we doubled at the high school level and increased pretty significantly at the middle school level. So, and one of the exciting things that we, we were rewarded last year, and then we were again successful this year, is we received a competitive grant from OSPI to offer Lummi language to our elementary schools. So we started it last year, which was again challenging with the pandemic and being on Zoom. And then this year, we were actually awarded the grant for two years. So we've been working with Kaluasit, Ted Solomon, to really work on developing those programs, getting the right people in place. We have Nancy Jefferson teaching at the middle schools and being supported and mentored by Smackia, so very exciting there. And then Cynthia Wilson has just begun, like in the last week or so, teaching Lummi language to our elementary students at Skyline and Eagle Ridge, and Heather and I met with Kaluasit this morning and just kind of looking, talking about the beginning of the program and the kickoff and getting into the classrooms there in the elementary school, so fun to see our kids being able to connect at a younger age. And as I mentioned here, our staff, Cynthia is new to our team, and we have Mia Owings and Logan Toby, who serve in our liaison positions at high school and middle schools. And then Nancy Jefferson teaching at the middle schools, and then Smackia at the high school, and also a little bit of Vista with Nancy. And then we're excited this year, we have JJ Jensen is an Assistant Principal at Ferndale High School, and he is First Nation Canadian, and Heather may feel free to jump in, and if you, I can't remember the exact tribe.
He's, he's also a descendant of the Noxak tribe, but he's an enrolled member of the Squay Nation.
Thank you. So it's great to have him on board and joining us, and then we hired Victoria Caswell, Member of the Lummi Nation. She's teaching junior English and yearbook at the high school, and is really glad to be home, and we're glad to have her back. Melinda?
Um, I recognize some of the faces, but would you mind using your mouse to say who's who?
Absolutely. This is Smackia, right here on the left, moving along. One step is JJ. And then Victoria, Cynthia. Up top here is Mia, and below is Nancy, and then Logan. So, and they are a great team, and I should put Heather in here, too. Why don't I have your picture in here?
But I was going to let, I see Seattle look, and, and who else did I see on here that joined us? Oh, yeah, Jesse. Victoria Caswell is Auntie Anita's niece. She lived, she was in Spokane for a long time teaching English, not a long time, but for a few years teaching English, but she's from the Washington family, Auntie Anita's niece.
Thank you. We need to add you then to this, Heather. So that, so that's our team. I'm very glad to have them. We enjoy working with them, so. And then on to budget. So here you can see in 2021, we spent just under $256,000 on our native student programs. We received 312,000, almost 313,000 in Impact Aid, as well as our tribal language grant, just, just a tad under $34,000. And then we also received 132, just almost 133,000 for Title VI. We currently use a combination of funds to support our Native American programs. We use Title VI, Title I, Tribal Language Grant, Impact Aid, and then also our general fund, Basic Education Dollars. So lots of different pots of money, support lots of different programs. And one of the things with the Impact Aid application for last year was we were able to use the previous year's data and information to apply for last year's Impact Aid. And we're just waiting to hear if they're making adjustments for this year on how we process that. But we haven't quite got that information yet, but given the fact that it's usually due by the beginning of February, we should be receiving that information fairly soon. And then this has been a really, really exciting month. If you remember, a couple of years ago, in just 2020, right before schools closed, Ferndale School District Fund our School District observed Treaty Day for the first time. So we closed our schools in observance of Treaty Day. And at the time, we also provided some education behind that for our students K through twelve and our staff. And for Children of the Setting Sun produced a wonderful educational video on Treaty Day and what a treaty was. And then our teaching and learning team developed lesson plans to support that instructional educational video. So as Fund our School District Board knows, and I'm sharing with the Lummy Nation Ed Board. We, as a district, wanted to, and our board wanted to adopt a land acknowledgement. But we just didn't want to just adopt the land acknowledgement. We wanted to make sure we provided the education around the why. Of a land acknowledgement. So back. Gosh, a year, I can't remember the date, so I don't want to misquote. But our board asked Jesse and Heather and Dr. Quinn at the time to work with the Lummy Nation. To develop a land acknowledgement and Heather took a significant lead role in that work. With the Lummy Nation had an ad hoc committee that worked together to develop the land acknowledgement. And that was approved by resolution. Back at the very beginning of the summer. And then throughout the summer, Heather worked with Children of the Setting Sun to develop. An educational video on the land acknowledgement and share the educational piece behind the why. And so then we, that was completed, like right at the end of October, right Heather? Right at the very beginning of Native American Heritage Month. And so we spent a lot of time with, and you, you had the word MTSS or the acronym, Multi-Tid System of Supports. Our court, we have coordinators in each school. So we worked with them and they produced work to develop. Developmentally appropriate lessons to accompany the video for our students. And. The video is, if you haven't seen it, it's phenomenal. It's about forty minutes long. And obviously a forty-minute video for a kindergarten or first grader was probably not going to be the best choice. So they actually worked to edit the pieces as a team as to what would be appropriate for our younger learners. And put together a short version and then the full version. And in the last week or so, our teachers and our buildings have been sharing that video on the land acknowledgement. And then our leading those lessons to our students, so really providing the education behind the why. And that was again done with collaboration with Children of the Setting Sun. Heather, is there anything you want to add there? Because you were such a significant part of this.
No, I think you covered it all.
It was, it was great. And it's been very well received. Our students are very, very much commenting on how much they, they learn from it. So it was a great experience and it followed the Treaty Day piece very nicely. So we, we now need to figure out what comes next.
I think the only thing that we would probably want to mention is it is in alignment with. Since Time Memorial Curriculum, the learning outcomes that, that we use to. Create the content for the educational video are the exact learning outcomes that are tied to Since Time Memorial. So if you don't know what Since Time Memorial, look on OSPI's website and there's some state mandated. Curriculum on there. And so we use that information as our learning outcomes and it aligns nicely.
Yeah, it, it's very perfect. And one of the things in the STI, Since Time Memorial Acronyms, Educators Love Acronyms. Is that it should be a place-based approach. So the fact that we have made this. Very place-based, it totally aligns with the STI. So it was, it was great. If you, you need the link, let me know, but it's available on our, I believe it's on our website and it's definitely on our Facebook page. So, or YouTube, you can find it. Uh, so that was a big part of the work for our recognition this year and honoring our Native American Heritage Month. But that wasn't the only piece. Different schools did different things in terms of displays and sharing information. If you walked into the high school, Smackier and his students have put together an amazing. Display in the kind of that big open area in front of the office. Lots of artifacts. They were out there regularly drumming and sharing their music and their dance with. Students and staff that were walking by. It was, it was really cool to be down there after school particularly. They were really active and, and sharing a lot with us. It was, it was beautiful. So Smackier does a wonderful job of, of sharing information and having his kids share information out with their student body. And then another highlight was at the end of this month, launching that fourth and fifth grade Lummy Language Classes. And then Jana and Heather, I'm going to rely on you here to support me a little bit as well. We met, gosh, a few weeks, weeks ago and looked over our JPPs. Our JPPs are our joint policies and procedures that we agree as the two boards to work within. And so we looked at them, made a few edits, made sure that we clarified some things that. You know, kind of updated it as to what we're realistically doing. One of the things that we say is we have two board meetings a year. And what we realized is that one board meeting is this joint meeting that we usually do in November, December. But then we also meet, a few of us meet with the Lummy Nation Ed Board, kind of. We, we've been meeting September, October, but we like to do that more May, June. To share how we, as a district, use our title dollars with the board and share information and kind of. Catch up on any things that we can touch base on at that time as well. So it'd be kind of two meetings a year. As well as meeting throughout as we, as we need. And. The IPPs are the Indian Policies and Procedures and they're a federal requirement for Impact Aid. So we like our JPPs because it's how we work together and the IPPs are the overarching piece. And when Jana, Heather and I looked at it, we, they align with each other very nicely, that there's nothing missing on either the IPP or the JPP. But what we have learned is that there are six IPPs and we have eight JPPs. So we're meeting in January to realign our eight AP JPPs into the six IPP category. So we'll do that work and bring it back to you. I shared the JPPs and IPPs that we worked on with Jana this afternoon. So she, I can share them out with the Lummy Nation Ed Board. And they really, if you think about IPPs, the, the federal piece, that's kind of like our policy. And then the JPPs are the procedure. That's how we actually do the work together. That's why it's a nice way for me at least to think about it as having the overarching, here's our policy and then here's our work. So then Impact Aid is a federal government providing funding for school districts. Who have reservation trust lands within their boundaries. So prior to collecting those, and this is what Jana was referencing earlier about. The Lummy Nation Ed Board, I'm signing off on or agreeing. Is that prior to us collecting Impact Aid, our JPPs and IPPs must be approved by. Actually by the Fendel School District, but the, we look for the Lummy Nation Education Board to say that yes, you agree with them as well. And then, um, one of the changes that we have made is that back in late twenty twenty. Our JPPs didn't align and reflect the language of the IPPs. So we made changes to that then. And then this is where we now want to come back and look at aligning our JPPs into these six same categories. As the IPPs, so that we have policy and procedure that aligns with each other. And then I mentioned earlier about our application for Impact Aid. Being whether we can use previous year's data or whether we do our usual pre-pandemic gathering of the data. And then submitting the Impact Aid application. We should hear fairly soon as to what that will look like. And then our goal is to continue that collaboration and continue meeting. Again, prior to the pandemic, Bernie, Dr. Quinn, Jana and a few others have met. Between monthly and, you know, quarterly for coffee, just to touch base and, and check in. And we'd like to obviously continue that relationship and partnership too. And that's in within our JPPs as well. And that's one of the ways in which we communicate is keeping in touch and scheduling time to meet together. Heather and I meet monthly with Kalivisit. In the Language and Culture Department. So touching base there on making sure that. We're in alignment and address anything before it becomes a concern and just checking in on how things are going. We also have monthly meetings with JOM and tomorrow is our November, December meeting at noon. And we had been talking about whether that timing at noon was the best timing for our families. For our Hispanic and Spanish-speaking families, we had actually offered family evenings. Informational evenings and we provided a Zoom about once every month, once every six weeks in the evening. So one of the, one of the pieces that we're looking at is whether maybe moving to an evening meeting may be more convenient for our families. And potentially in the new year, changing the time to better accommodate and ensure the people that want to be there can be there. We have a dedicated School District Native American Facebook page, which Pam Jenkins, who works in mine and Kelly's office, keeps updated. And is often asking for, hey, give me something. If you want to share it, please share. We talked about our joint meetings. We talked about our coffee meetings with our superintendents and members of our teams. And then one of our best ways of communicating is through our staff. So Mia and Logan and Nancy and Smackier do a lot of outreach, a lot of connections, a lot of time talking and, and checking in. And then, um, we've also had people, obviously Heather, prior to me, Dr. Quinn. Where people knew that they could reach out and get help when they needed it. So again, please don't ever hesitate to reach out. And then if we can better communicate with you, we'd love to hear about that. And we'd love to hear if you'd like us to communicate differently. So any, any feedback there would be great.
Well, thank you, Fay. That was a great presentation. A lot of work. Did you have other things to say?
Nope, just to open up to questions, comments.
Love to hear some feedback from our Lummy Nation School Board members as well as Fendel.
There's a couple of people that have their hand up, Andrew, like Jana and Melinda.
Yeah, I, um, Fay, and I know it was kind of last minute, but there were, we were going to discuss, or you were going to kind of give us an update of the STI. And I don't know if you have that or if anybody could kind of go over that a little bit. Or where that's at, or you know, just a little bit of update on.
Definitely, Jana. We popped that, um, agenda item three point oh nine. So right, a little bit further down the agenda.
Oh, sorry, I didn't open the agenda. So my fault. My apologies.
It's all good.
Yeah, you touched on a lot of the agenda items that will come to.
Yeah.
As we move down the list, but other comments or thoughts? Melinda, did you have one?
Yeah, Fay, on slide number three, there's percentage of all students who are Native American or Alaska Native. We've got about thirteen, fourteen percent on that slide. But in other reports that we get, like a Personnel Administration report that we got, it's around nine percent. Can you explain where it is and why the difference in the numbers?
That is a great question, Melinda, and it comes from when we run federal race categories. We can pull out just Native American, Alaska Native. And a lot of the times that our students are. Can class as mixed race. So they have, they're either Hispanic and Native American. So that's why you see it kind of fluctuate a little bit is whether it's being pulled out as. Mixed race or simply Native American. So it's. Not as many of our students are just Native American, Alaska Native, a lot more have two or three. Race categories in their federal categorization.
So on the other reports that we see more often that are around a nine percent. Is there any reason why we can't use this number or we have to use the other number or I'm just curious?
Yep, great question. I actually was talking to Kerry, who's our data processor today about that. And trying to make sure that we keep consistent in how we report and how we pull it out. Because you'll see a report later that you read in the next few weeks that pulls out mixed race and then doesn't pull out mixed race. So I asked exactly the same question, like if we could just be consistent with ourselves and we know what we're talking to.
And maybe adding another line or something. I don't know, but I don't want to forget five percent of those kids. And yeah.
Yep.
Other thoughts or comments?
Yes, Andrew?
Yes, Lawrence.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Lawrence Solomon. I'm a education rep for the, for the council here in Lummy. It's really good to see everybody. And usually we'd be eating at the Silver Reef Casino or up at Vista. Really glad to see everybody this evening. We're doing the best we can. We could meet like this. This is the safest way we could do it. So I'm really glad to be here with all of you. And thank you Fay for the good presentation. Just like you said, you know, communication is, uh, is, is paramount, you know, just like fifty and stuff. And I really appreciate this presentation. So I have a few things. It might be on the presentation, but some of the things that. I think this is a perfect opportunity to express issues or, or things that are, are people, you know, are voicing. You know, at this time, you know, during our joint meeting where we can address, we don't have to address it today, but at least bring it to the front. For next time we can address other things. But I'm happy to be here with the, uh, the Lummy Nation Education Board. And I see Terrence and Mr. Villiers. Really see you all. Like I said, my name is Lawrence and I, I attended Central and I'm a Central Panther, Vista Viking. I also went to Fendel High School. So I went to, through my whole life, I attended Fendel School District. And, um, it's really important, you know, these meetings that we have, these meetings. I, I talk about it time and time again. I served in the United States Navy and the United States, we have the world's strongest navy. Not because we have the, the biggest warships or the biggest aircraft carriers. We have the most money. Then it's, we have the world's strongest navy because we acknowledge each other's values. And we respect each other's values. People from all walks of life, African-American, Caucasian, Hispanic, Latino. Filipino, Indians, Native Americans, all walks of life. We're the world's strongest navy because we acknowledge and respect each other's values and really want to, you know. To ta- little, talk a little bit about that and why this is important, why we get to meet today. But I'm, uh, towards the end, I'll talk a little bit about it. But, um, some of the things that we, that were brought forward to me today, I talked a little bit with some. The Lummy members are, they have students that attend Fendel School District. Elementary through high school. One of the things, uh, I guess that we don't have to talk about it today is the floods, you know, safety is paramount. And I, I noticed yesterday that Fendel's School District was closed. And that, you know, and looking out for the safety of our families and our students, I really appreciate that. And, um, you know, it's, uh, things that we don't expect and we have the best way we can. COVID nineteen, um, some of the things that were brought forward to me is, you know, the kids feel safe. You know, it's a good, good compliment, you know. You know, it's a good, good compliment, you know, Ferndale School District is doing a good job in addressing to make the kids feel safe, you know. And some of the things that from COVID-19, it brings other things to the front. Like behavior health, you know, some of the things that our children are experiencing during these times, even ourselves, you know, anxiety, depression, or these other things, you know, that, you know, kid, check kids. Now, we really appreciate the Ferndale School District and what they do for our kids. And I'm really glad, you know, Fay, you mentioned that earlier, that there's Lummy Language now being offered at the elementary schools. And that's, that's awesome. Some of the other things I wanted to talk about what was brought forward to me today is the Lummy Student Athletes. Their student athletes, they attend Ferndale High School or Vista or Horizon. And they, they express to one of our, you know, they, you know, somebody has to advocate for our students. And they feel, feel like they're being left out. And you know, if they're not being heard, you know, I really want to be that voice for them. We've had a lot of Lummy athletes that have attended Ferndale, Drum Toby, Kingdom Johnson, Tyson Araro, Robin Finkbonner, just to name a few. So I think, you know, I think, you know, to acknowledge it and you know, that's how the kids are feeling. They, they feel that they're maybe not given a chance. Or they feel less or they know something, you know, if it's equity, no, I think they need a chance, but I just want to be here and be a voice for our students. And when it's time with Ms. Layton, we have a little presentation that, when, when there's a good time. But I want to thank you for listening and I'm happy to be here with you all to, you know, bring these things forward, good and bad. You know, we have a lot of good things come to our board meetings, a lot of, some bad things. And you know, there are issues that we have to face and how are we going to address those? But thank you, Fay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hi, Shka. Thank you.
Other comments? Box to share? All right, great discussion. But Jesse, yes?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I could probably echo what Lawrence said. Since I've been on the board and you guys have heard the story I've been telling you, and it's no secret, that's what Lawrence is talking about. And I'm glad he said something. The one, one comment I wanted to make was the IPP and a JPP should be reflected in a school board policy. And that's, it needs to be reviewed. I mean, we can do JPP and IPP, but we could set that aside or put it on the shelf or whatever. But it's not in the policy. So I think if we align what those have said, what it, what you've been working on, Fay. And then if we, you know, concentrate on the athletic issue too, that's a big, it's a big deal. I mean, I'm telling you, our kids go to birthday do the sport more than anything. And then when they're involved in sports, they're involved in school. So really it goes hand in hand. And I think we need to work on that, especially the policies, to make sure those are aligned. And Mr., I don't know, Mr. Fairburn or whatever, is it reflected in your policy? If the coaches take time for all the students, not just a handful of students, but all the students and give them a fair shake, you know. Our kids are very talented and a lot of them, they don't get to, you know, get that time to shine. And they need, I know all our kids need that. And I'm going to keep saying it. I, I said it before. I said it a hundred million times. And I'll say it again until somebody hears me, you know. But I'm always going to advocate for the child. Thank you.
Hi, Shka. Jessie.
I don't want to move on prematurely, so.
All right. Hello, can I, can I add something?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow along with Councilman Solomon and just thank Fay for the great presentation. I can see a lot of hard work, research went into, went into your presentation and I just wanted to throw it out there and I think it would be very beneficial. If you're up to it on some platform, if we could share that with our community for better understanding, you know, and awareness. And I do, do want to thank Lawrence for bringing up, you know, just some, some things that we are trying to address as, on a leadership level and making sure our kids are well taken care of and provided for through this pandemic. And understanding them and their needs, you know, for myself, it's always important to be present in the moment for our kids. You know, it's, it's real easy to find a kid a ride or have them use their laptop for homework or ask them about their game, but really being at the game and sitting down with my son and helping him with his schoolwork and giving him a ride to school and making sure I'm sending him to school in a good mood, you know, because that's where he's going to learn the best and he's going to thrive. And the Lummy Nation School goes above and beyond to accommodate my boys. You know, I like how Lawrence referenced our student athletes and the Blackhawks take pride in naming them students first before their athletes, you know, that's a a privilege to be a Black Hawk, a Golden Eagle, a Panther, a Viking. All of those things, you know, those are things that are earned. You know, our elders teach us time and time again that, you know, any gift isn't given to you, you know, you need to earn it. And there's a lot of cultural values that go into what we teach our kids and instill in them from a very young age. And hopefully someday it's passed on, you know, from what my grandparents have left my parents and passed on from so on, from gathering to fishing to our traditional ways and what we practice in our longhouses. And I know that Ferndale and the Ferndale School District have been very understanding and sympathetic when it comes to our cultural ways, in my experience. And coming to, you know, coming to school and having some sort of, of empathy, right? And so, you know, I just, I, I just wanted to throw that out there. Fay's ever up to it, we can coordinate with Ms. Layton and see what we could do to possibly share that with our people because it really helped me. I have a better idea and understanding and so I can relay the message to, to the people we talk to on a daily, you know, and I appreciate them as well as my Aunt Jessie for bringing forward those, those concerns, you know, I, I will say it, say it like it is that that's been going on forever, you know, and, and when we can break the cycle and you know, like I said, I truly believe we're not looking for sympathy, just empathy, you know, we want to, it's not asking for something to be handed over, but you know, for instance, for anybody that's not aware, in my own conversations, you know, for varsity basketball, boys' basketball, invite only, you know, and I've never heard of that in, in all my years of being involved in high school and I played basketball competitively and kind of, it's just discouraging, you know, to some of those kids that do put the time in and the effort to to play at that level, you know, a lot of these kids dream and grow up of being a Golden Eagle and representing their school at the highest level. And I am so grateful that somebody put that out there, that, that comes with good grades, good academics. That's a requirement. That's the first requirement to play on any of these athletic teams is that your schoolwork comes first. So once again, Fay, I hold my hands up to you and I thank you for that great presentation. You know, I took a lot home from this tonight and I will be sure to share it with my people. And hopefully someday down the road, we can get you to share that on a different level, on a different platform. Thank you all.
I should TJ, and I would be more than happy to feel free to connect with me or through Heather, whichever is easier for you. But absolutely would be happy to.
TJ, maybe put your policy person to work and have her coordinate that meeting.
Oh yeah, for sure. I'll, I'll be sure to do that first thing in the morning.
It's Marissa Fay.
If you guys, I was going to say my new policy analyst as the new vice chair is Marissa Jones. That's Heather's daughter.
She definitely has my number. Yeah.
All right.
More than happy to help any way I can.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. And I will promise you, I'm not playing a game or texting people, but I'm trying to manage the agenda on my phone. Going blank, so I apologize. I never mastered how to have the agenda on my screen and see everybody. In any case, so the next item on the agenda is actually a discussion, a review and discuss the the joint policies and procedures, the JPPs that we have. And so I know these were attached to the agenda and I'm not sure if everyone has that available to them for a discussion or how we'd like to proceed with this session. Yeah, I was just going to ask you if you wanted to.
I can share my screen and then Jana and I can give a real quick and Heather can give a real quick overview on the JPPs if that works and then flip to the IPPs.
That would be great. And I'm just going to acknowledge right now, you know, it's, it's about 10 after 6:00. And we can work up to pretty close to 7:00. But then we do have our regular business meeting at 7:00. So we may have to juggle a few items and, and discuss how to go forward in the future. But I didn't want to cut short the great discussion we were having just a minute ago. And so we'll see how far we get, but I think the discussion is great. And I think the interactions that we're having are very, very important. So again, I don't want to cut that short. But Fay, I'll turn it over to you. You can share your screen and maybe.
If you wouldn't mind indulging for just one second, because Andrew prompted me earlier in the meeting and I missed it, my opportunity. That because of the, kind of the disruption and change in schedule this month, we had a conversation, Bernie and Kristen Kinley and, and I spoke about when we went, moved this meeting to virtual and decided to kind of take care of the, the items we needed to, from a business standpoint. We would do that and then schedule another meeting in, in January where we could actually get together in person and have that, share a meal and, and have that face to face opportunity to get to know each other a little bit better. So I apologize for missing my cue earlier to interject that, but wanted to make sure as we're bumping up the, the time, we'll definitely have enough, another opportunity to, to meet the rest of the agenda. So thank you.
Well, if you decide to hold that meeting at the Silver Reef, I think Diane and I would like a rain circle. All right, now Fay, please.
Janet, you want to stop?
Well, I was just going to say, maybe if we started with the IPPs because just for that fact that it's really what brought us all here tonight. And the JPPs are, we're going to adjust anyway. And they're really kind of what you just went over is the JPP. So really the, the meat of it is the IPPs. So as long as we get to that tonight, because that, that's a document that has to get sent off and the other is the work that's going to get done.
And that, that makes perfect sense, Jana, because that will give you, Heather and I, time to align the JPPs into the six IPP categories. Yeah. Okay. So Jana and Heather, feel free to jump in here to, you've been part of this work. So the introduction really talks about equal access to programs, services and activities offered within our district.
Okay. There's a couple of screens in front of your PowerPoint.
Okay, hold on. Try again. How's that?
Good.
Yep. Okay, perfect. Sorry. So really, the, the purpose behind the IPPs is to make sure that our access, and this is a great point that TJ and Lawrence and Jessie talked about, making sure that we have that equal access to programs, services and activities offered within our district. And that we review them manually. And in order to apply for Impact Aid, these have to be approved by the Ferndale School District School Board. And we provide this attestation that this is how we work with our policies and procedures. The first part is making sure that we communicate regularly, which again, I shared during the earlier presentation. And shared how we do that and how we are continuing to improve that collaboration and communication. And Jana has copies of these, so can share them with the Lummy Nation Ed Board. And I will ensure Jackson uploads them to Board Docs for our board members today. So our first policy is all about how we disseminate information and how we share that information with you when we complete our Impact Aid application, how we assess our educational programs, which you've seen tonight. And how we plan, again, our district educational programs, which we do both within this presentation tonight. And then also when we meet and talk about our title funding sharing. So the second part of this is for how we notify the Lummy Nation and parents to share their views on our educational program. And again, this comes back to our communication with our J O M meetings, making sure that we touch base regularly. And that the Lummy Nation folks know who they can access and contact when they need support. And how we go about soliciting input from, from you. And again, we've shared this with you tonight, our November, December meeting. Our federal title funding allocation and monthly parent advisory groups. The third policy is on sharing information on annually assessing our participation, which again, we went over tonight. And looking, and this is where we did the comparison between our Native American students and our non-Native American students so that we can really try to drill down into that equitable access. And as I shared earlier, one of our focus areas is on our special education qualification. And working on addressing that. And then our fourth policy is on assessing and receiving input and then acting on that input, which you shared. And how we can continue to make sure that we push out information and then also receive it as well. We, we don't want it to be just one way communication. Um push out information and then also receive it as well, we we don't want it to be just one-way communication, we'd like it to be both ways. And the fifth procedure and policy is all on how we track those comments and how we keep. Um informed on different topics and suggestions that we receive and how we address those. And then our final policy and procedure is providing um current um. JPPs and IPPs to you prior to submitting the impact aid application. Jenna and Heather, any additional comments on the IPPs? I kinda scanned those fairly fast for you.
No, and just for my board, though, the the these are a change and the reason why we, like you said, we have eight. There used to be eight policies and procedures and now there's six. And if we, if you guys didn't do this meeting, and this is for maybe your new board members. You would have to request a waiver from Lummy Nation because you're getting the impact aid money for having um. The reservation within your service area, and if we didn't sign off either on the waiver or you having this meeting and showing. Documentation that you're having a meeting with us, then um. You wouldn't be able to submit the application. Uh so that's the reason why all this is happening, the way it's happening and um. Besides being good neighbors.
That's the important piece is the um being good neighbors together and working together.
Fay, can you share the timeline? I mean, we're sharing the information here, but when does the board vote on it to adopt it? When do we send off the impact aid application?
Et cetera. I would deflect to Mark and Andrew on answering the logistical specifics.
Yes, and I will certainly deflect to Mark.
And I will deflect to um, no, I think uh, I believe it's, I believe it's in December. But I will, I have to double check on that, I know it's it's uh very soon, but. Uh it's either December, January, but I believe it's December.
And I believe impact aid has to be filed before February one.
Yeah.
Bernie, am I right there?
I think we should have all deflected to Bernie. The hand signals, I could.
Alright, were were you gonna go over the um. KPP, or I know you've already done that, so is there any other thing that we need to review with this? And so in, I guess, and there'll be further discussion and action taken in December if if needed. Uh to make sure this is submitted in on on time. Alright, um the next item on the agenda is just an update on our February. Ferndale School District levy, so I'm gonna turn it over to interim superintendent Mark to give us an update.
Yeah, that's basically the update, so in um we are uh. At that point in time again, when we um will be running a levy, um. I I know the question I always get is really, it's awfully soon, um which, yes, it is. We with the levy failure um uh last time, we got off cycle um with the rest of the districts in the county. Um so we ran a two-year, a two-year levy which expires at the end of of uh twenty twenty-two, so we need to renew that, so. The um we'll be putting out information and um probably reaching out for some help. Um to uh communicate and and provide information for. Uh uh folks uh from Lummy, um because we need your support, um or would you like it anyway? As we move forward with the agenda, yeah, Heather.
I was just gonna say, um just remind you that um I had a conversation with um. Seattle luck Lawrence today and he's working on getting us on LIBC's agenda, so we can bring a presentation out to LIBC. Um and seek endorsement.
That's fantastic.
And I think it's gonna be, he was working on December seventh.
Thank you, Lawrence, that's that's marvelous, we appreciate that very much.
Mark, I was just gonna add that this is the Ferndale School Board uh decided. To run a continuation levy in terms of the dollar amount, so this is again a dollar fifty per. Per thousand for two years. And then at the end of that two-year period, if all goes well, we would be on the same cycle as all the other school districts. Uh in the in the county as opposed to being off cycle.
Right, and this, it's a replacement, it's not a new uh new tax, it's not a new initiative, this is a uh the old one is gonna go away. Um so we're asking for a uh replacement. Um so we can maintain our, maintain all of our programs that are currently funded out of them um with the levy dollars. So unless there's any questions. About that.
The effect of the bond sales um and the impact on taxes that'll let it date, but that was. That's a positive impact on the overall tax rate. And so hopefully our community will see that as a benefit and vote to continue this this levy.
Yeah, and it's actually, we have the lowest um school tax rate in the in the county. Um our levy rates lower, bond rates lower, it's we're in um. We have a low, low school tax rate compared to others. And we're planning on keeping it that way, so that's a good thing.
And then, Mark, you wanna just move right into, unless there are questions, if there are questions about the levy, we'll take those at this point. If not, I'm just gonna continue on to the next item, which is an update on the new high school, so Mark.
Yeah, so speaking of bonds, um so the bond that that passed in two thousand nineteen. Um anybody who has driven through uh Ferndale recently in the vicinity of the of the current high school has probably seen. Um a visual example of the of the uh the new high school, you can actually see the uh. Building going up, the the steel structure um over the roof of the um over the high school. Um it's pretty exciting, uh it's three stories, mechanical mezzanine, so it looks really tall. Athletic wing, it's it's gonna be a really, really nice upgrade. Um in that room, and I know um Jesse has asked um for clarification and and. We have in the plans a uh uh. Lummy Language Office Room Classroom um section right by the um right by the commons. Um so there'll be a spot for um. Spackey and the Oksala program and the um everything in the uh in the new high school. We are also, one of the things that that we are um pursuing, we probably will be reaching out to somebody, we will be reaching out to. Uh somebody for help, I'm not exactly sure who, um so maybe you all can um let me know. Um we received a um authorization from the um State Arts Commission. Um and we've got some money to commission artwork um for the new building, um and so we are interested in. Getting some local artists um to provide art, uh but we need to get them through the state approval process so they get on the list. Um as a um uh be eligible uh for the program, so. Um uh some direction on on who to contact, uh for that would be much appreciated either now or at a later time. So um. For my colleagues, anything that I'm missing on the that I should throw in on the on the uh on the school, we're a couple of years out from. Um having it all open, but it'll have new um new athletic facilities, new vocational um building, uh learning spaces. The greenhouse will be um reopened, the aquaculture program will be um rehoused in a different. Um a different uh building. So a lot of, lot of good stuff going on there. So, okay.
Alright, any any questions for Mark? Alright, continuing.
Do uh uh just submit names to you?
Yes, that would be fantastic if you had um some information for me.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that, Jesse.
That I made of you, Mark.
Oh, you know, that might be outside their budget, Bernie. They might not, that might not fall within the. With it, we didn't get six figures.
Not a Picasso, but it's a.
It looks like one of the early Picasso charcoal sketches, maybe.
Charcoal phase, yes.
Mark, I was just gonna say, it might be worth our time to create an announcement and push it out through our Lummy social media platforms. To get the word out to any Lummy artists that we have that might be interested.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
And.
We can assist. Oh, coordinate, sorry, go ahead, Bernie.
No, go ahead, TJ, that's great, what you were gonna say.
No, I was just gonna say, say I, we can assist in that too as well and. Uh using our social media platforms and reaching out to tribal members and seeing what best fits within. Within the school board here, um just let me know how I can assist as well and. There's a lot of great artists.
Maybe that, maybe that could be part of our presentation when we go out on the seventh, Mark.
Sure, yes, let's work on a on a um, I think Selena is um listening, so we can uh. Put together a uh an announcement or a flyer, a post. That's great.
Other questions or comments?
About this or just in general?
Oh, just about this, we we need to curtail your thoughts and comments, right?
You you need to. You know, uh Andrew and Leanne, I just want to congratulate you on your years of service, as you know, I was as. A school director there from um nineteen ninety-six, I was actually appointed by the board first. And uh served there until two thousand and eleven and um, you know, served with you and. Uh have a great deal of camaraderie from all the different um practically anonymous things that we did. Uh together during those years, but um you know, the school districts um play a very important. In my belief, a role not only just in education, but also um economics and um. You know, improving the uh the quality of life, and you know, it's one of the factors when you deal with um. Uh in terms of economic development, you know, marketing to companies that wanna relocate. Uh to a particular area, they wanna know what the schools are like. And um, you know, because they have families and desires of uh having families raised and. You know, good and decent public schools, which Ferndale has always enjoyed, one of the top reputations around the state, to my knowledge. And I wanna thank both you and Leanne for uh your contributions to um. Uh how, making, you know, our school district uh very professionally highly up, highly run. Operation of um different things that we were able to do together, uh including, you know, the formation and development of these. Early on conversations like we're having tonight, and um, you know, I just wanna thank you for your education leadership down through these years. Um but I also wanted to um intimate to you this evening that when Mark and I were talking about that. Uh we weren't gonna be able to meet tonight, uh we were very chagrin in knowing that this was going to be your last. You know, meeting this evening, and uh so I wanna invite you to um come back to our meeting in January, whenever we're able to. You know, poll the members, uh both of the Lummy Education Board as well as the Ferndale School District Board. Um you know, just to um. You know, we've had a couple of blankets and we've been gathering different people's prayers to um wrap you and. Um you know, just symbolically, just make sure that we are able to say a proper goodbye to you and. Um proper kind of thanks for you to uh hold up our hands to you and all the different things that we've been able to do together. We couldn't possibly say thank you enough, but uh we just wanna have that public acknowledgement. You know, from the Lummy community, all the different things that you you did and to call to mind some of those things that that we did together during those. Uh during those years, uh but you're very, very important people to the Lummy Nation.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, it kinda got me misty, I thought I was making it through this pretty good. And uh it's been, it's been a privilege for me to work, of course, with the Ferndale District, but also with the. Lummy Nation School District, it's been uh in education and it's been uh exciting. And I I'm excited because I I know where we started years ago and where we are today, and there's still lots of work to done, but to be done, but we. We've made some headway and I'm proud to be to have been part of it, so thank you, and I look forward to to January. Leanne, you got anything you wanna say? Not gonna put you on the spot, but I will.
Well, I haven't cried, Bernie, and you're gonna make me cry, so um thank you, thank you for your friendship. Um this is, this has been a wild ride and I would not have done it any other way without you, Bernie, so, thanks.
Alright. Well, we all just stop with that, but we won't. We will continue to march on and um I'm gonna stay with Mark and he'll give an update on the search for the next superintendent.
Which is one of my favorite topics of the night, the um school board is uh in the process of doing a. A search for new superintendent, um which will not be me, um I am the interim for seven months and that's. Um that's it, I think everybody's very happy about that. Um the uh they are, I think several of you on the screen here have participated in the um. Focus groups um that the consultant firm um conducted um to get input on um kinda what. What qualities, what traits, what was important um to uh all of our communities in in uh new superintendent. They have gathered up that information and are actually presenting that to the Ferndale School Board. Um tonight at the regular business meeting, what they found um in um preparation for. Uh putting out the official announcement and advertisement, they have already kind of unofficially. Um put it out on the street that that we'll be looking for a new uh superintendent this year. Um but it will be officially announced in the official brochure, um will go and be going out very shortly, so that's kinda where we are in the process. So once that information um is out there, um after um after we get back from the holidays. Um after people have a chance to to put in their materials. Um they will start the screening process um and narrow down the the group of candidates and um. Then begin conducting interviews in the uh in the spring, um which I believe March, John. He's looking to unmute. Hi, took me a little while, um. Yeah, I think uh first screenings in in February, preliminaries and and. In the beginning of March and finalists at the end of March, hoping to be able to announce um right around the beginning of spring break. And the next opportunity for public input will be in that March timeframe. Right? So questions or or um things to share on that?
On the agenda, well, actually, no, I'll bring it up in next meeting, nevermind.
Alright, well, if there aren't any other comments or questions, uh we'll move on to item three point oh seven. Which is an update on collaboration with JOM, so Fay, I'll turn this back over to you.
And this is pretty um quick update because we've covered it earlier today. Um but one of the, one of the things that we have noticed is we've had um a significant um attendee has been from the district. Level, which is great, um but our uh family um participation and engagement has dropped off. So one of the things we're working on in the next, um we have a meeting tomorrow, but then working with Candy and Heather. Um to figure out whether there is a better time, um and if there's a better time in the evening, what maybe a better day would be. Um and what that time would be so that we reengage, we used to um. And this was prior to me being in this position, but we used to have um a lot of engagement when we met in person at JOM and had lunch, shared lunch together. Um which obviously we can't do right now, but hopefully we can in the future, uh but just looking at what might make um. Make it easier for our families to join us. make it easier for our families to join us.
Okay. Questions or comments for Faye? All right. Then I'll move down to three point oh eight, which is an update on our recognition of Native American Heritage Month and the land acknowledgement. And I know we've talked about this a little bit more, but Faye, I wasn't sure if you had other things you wanted to add. So, again, Faye.
Yep, I think Heather and I tied that really into our presentation earlier, but if anybody has any specific questions on, on things that we did, happy to elaborate on them. But our biggest piece of that recognition this year was really to what with the educational piece of the land acknowledgement that the Ferndale School Board approved last month. So great to have an official land acknowledgement for the district that was approved by resolution from the Lemmy Nation. So great process. So thank you. Benny?
Thanks, Faye, for, I don't know how you were able to do that in these little tiny pretty bunch vignette that we have going on here, but I just wanted to mention to you that I shared it at a couple of statewide meetings that I was party to and you know, and then prior to the Thanksgiving holiday and, and over the holiday, you know, the president of the University of Washington, the dean of the University of Washington School of Ed, Eastern Washington President, Central Washington President, their provost, people from the governor's office had all seen the video, thought it was very moving, very touching for them and you know, they want to, wanted me to send along congratulations to the district and Heather and the rest of, you know, members of the setting sun and all that. You know, just so I encourage anybody that hasn't seen it to, I look it up on YouTube and just Google it and send her Ferndale Land Acknowledgement. You know, I didn't know the exact, you know, internet coordinates and everything, but shared it with a lot of people and, you know, other tribal members are like, hey, how do we get to do something similar in our area and that kind of thing. So I wouldn't be surprised if you got a phone caller too, just from other tribes saying, hey, how do we do that for our tribe? You know, so kudos to the Ferndale School District and Heather and the rest of the members of the team that helped to pull that off. It was really well done though. Thank you.
And then Andrew, I just wanted to add that your colleagues, Leanne and Melinda did a fabulous job at WASDA in presenting the land acknowledgement and the process that the board and the district followed to get to that point. They did a fabulous job. Was very well received.
Well, and I will add that Heather and Kelly and Faye did a fabulous job pulling that presentation together. Sorry for the dog in the background. And Bernie, this presentation should go on the road. So if you have places where this presentation should happen, you get ahold of those women because it was, it was well received. It was well done. It was heartfelt. It was just the best.
And even outside of school districts too, I think one of the things I really appreciate about the land acknowledgement is that it's open to the whole community. Everybody who is here on Lemmy lands. So I really appreciate the Lemmy Nation's leadership on this.
I know the folks from the University of Washington wanna come up and meet you all. And so I'm not sure when that's gonna happen. It's just, you know, what I, word I was receiving back from different people, so.
Right.
I didn't take credit for any of it, by the way.
All right. Other comments or questions? All right, then our last general item is an update on since time and memorial curriculum. Faye, that's you again.
Thanks. I feel like I've talked a lot. So actually for the Ferndale School District Board, during our regular meeting and just around about an hour's time, we have Dr. Laura Lynn from O S P I joining us to talk about S T I at the state O S P I level. So she'll be giving some additional information on some things that the state, the state kind of overview of S T I. But we, back in, gosh, early spring, kind of right around April time, Dr. Quinn had put together a report on how we were managing and facilitating S T I within the district. And a lot of our, we laid out kind of where all of different pieces of S T I are placed throughout our different grade levels. And then at the secondary level within some of our social studies classes, along with some of those really big district-wide projects that we shared earlier tonight with the Treaty Day Educational Piece and the video and the lessons. And then following up this year with the land acknowledgement piece, a big part of the S T I piece. And there are five essential questions that the S T I kind of focuses on. And the big, one of the big pieces to me is the importance that S T I places on it being a place-based curriculum. So really working with the Lemmy Nation and in collaboration, particularly with our Culture and Language Department and our Lemmy Nation colleagues to make sure that when we provide S T I, we're providing it from the lens of the original inhabitants of this land, which is the Lemmy people. So it's, it is woven throughout different grade levels, different contents, and then we're very intentional about kind of doing a key twelve piece. Heather, Kelly, feel free to add anything here. We know it's not perfect yet. We're definitely improving it and working on it at different grade levels and making sure that we make the educational piece as relevant and making sure that we are, we are sharing the historical truth of the land.
I would just, I would just kinda, I don't know, acknowledge is the right word, but just remember that although since, since time and memorial curriculum is very important and it's a state mandate, it does, it does, it is a place, but it does require us to be place-based. And so we also have to acknowledge the protocols and the practices within the Lemmy Nation and how they share information with us, how information is recorded. We're very much an oral tradition, so it's a lot of things that S T I wants us to partner with. They're not things that are written in a textbook. They're not written on a paper. You can't pick it up and read it, which is why it's so important to do things like the Treaty Day video, like the land acknowledged video, because we can reach a large span of students on multiple platforms and with a big content that could be broken down between multiple grade levels and that's age appropriate. And in getting, working with the Lemmy Nation to help us develop things like that and endorse it as, as true and, and accurate work, that, that bridge has got to continue to be built and that partnership has to happen if we wanna do a really good job at implementing S T I. So some, what I'm saying is sometimes things move a little bit slower than what somebody might want them to move because we also have to honor the practices and the protocols and the learning styles of the Lemmy Nation. And they're very two different things. So we've, we've been very fortunate to have a very large staff of Native American Lemmy members within our district and that has helped our progress. But we also have to recognize that sometimes I think like our, our classroom teachers, our teachers might get a little bit impatient because their style of learning comes from this textbook. Our style of learning and teaching comes in a different way and we have to be able to, to be accepting of both, so.
Thank you. Any questions on S T I?
I have a comment. You know, thinking about S T I and how important it is to our school and to our students to begin with. I really see T J and Lawrence that our tribe needs the office, a central office for S T I to get out the resources, the proper resources from the tribe. You know, that we can track what has been done and provide more information that, that they need. And I, I'm available. I would love to help. We're gonna just let me know.
Thank you. Other comment?
This is Jana. Auntie Juanita's listening somewhere. I don't know where she's at on here, but she's muted somehow. So I just, she just texted me. She just wants to request that maybe we have a meeting to be updated on the S T I in a little more detail. And then also another request is to get an update on any racial problems or solutions that are going on and so that we can be ready in case another event happens.
Thanks, Jana.
Other comments or thoughts on this? All right, we have just a few minutes left and we'll open it up for our final sharing. So if anyone has anything they would like to share at this time. You know, I'd just like to say again, it's been a, a privilege to work with, with the Lemmy Nation School District, our school board and, and Ferndale School Board. And I look forward to hearing about the continuation of the great work that's being done. I don't really have anything else to share because I'm not planning on doing anything outrageous after this next meeting. So, anything to share, Bernie? No?
I think Councilmember Solomon had something.
Yes, thank you, Heather. All right. It's the chairman, Andrew and Leanne. I know Bernie touched a little bit on it earlier, but properly do it safely when we can, wanna present this to you. We have two of these. One for Andrew and one for Leanne. We can't thank you guys enough and your contributions and to the Ferndale School District and to all the students and our Lemmy students and Lemmy. They're inspiration and how to be and how to serve the people. And we wanna present this to you and it's a good time and wrap you with this. They say when we wrap you with a blanket, that we're praying for you and that we pray that this blanket brings you warmth and comfort. And to know that, that, you know, this is from love and kindness to you, our friends, Andrew and Leanne, we wanna present these to you when, when it's a good time. So thank you for all you do, for the Ferndale School District and all you do for all the students and our Lemmy students. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. That's, that's amazing. I'm honored to receive such a gift. Yeah. Thank you. I look forward to that meeting soon. Other thoughts or comments to share? I know that going forward, the staff and administration at the Ferndale District is reaching out to schedule the next steps on, on all the items that were discussed and touched upon tonight. They're great about keeping things moving, so I look forward to that. I, I know I won't see most of you, I think, until after the holidays, but I hope you all have a safe holiday season. Enjoy being with the family and I hope you're all safe. Anyone else? All right, well, with that, so we can jump on our chairs and get to our next meeting. I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.
Yeah.